six hundred West Cleveland Boulevard on November third, twenty fourteen at seven P. M. Forward rise for implication, please. Lord, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day, also for the opportunity to have us present to do what we have to do today. I'll just give things to our little ones that are growing and learning a lot, also the blessing of seeing the children that grow up to become beautiful parents. It's one of the great blessings I learned with time that I used to respect, I always respect my elders, but then I started to realize I'm becoming one of the elders and I'm being more appreciative of all your work, Lord. I want to say thank you, give good health to the ones that aren't feeling well, to the ones that have passed on, please give their family time to forgive and have them understand that their loved ones are in a better place. Please watch out for us and bless this council and the city of Ransus Pass. Thank you, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item number three, the consent agenda. All of the following items of consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless these items, unless the council member so requests, if the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the count, the consent agenda will be considered separately. Items A, B, C, and D are part of this, and I do have a discrepancy on one or one.
There's a couple.
Okay, so I'm going to start with one, which I'm sure you probably got where it states Mary Tommy Knight, they gave the proclamation last week, so we can fix that, remove Tommy Knight, put my name on there. Yeah, it's like, man, he came back, that's good. It's under page two. Item five, proclamation celebration of the Texas native plants. I don't know if you caught it yet. On October twentieth, twenty fourteen. Did you find it? I have it right here.
About number four, the proclamation?
Number five, proclamation of celebration of the Texas native plants of October twentieth, twenty fourteen. It was, it's on the minutes of October twentieth, twenty fourteen, City Council, Ransus Pass. Got it? Okay, if we can correct that, appreciate it. I'm glad, I'm glad you like to keep me on my toes, make sure I read this stuff, yeah. And then another one, another one I got was item C. I had voted nay on that one for considering not to amend in the general business use tables to allow C conditional, and it had me voting the, it was for, I think it was, should be supposed to been against it.
Question for you again?
Yes, ma'am.
What item number?
Uh, let me see. Item C under eight. And that's all I have. If anybody else has any other stat. Call up anybody else, thank you. Brad?
No.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with all corrections.
Second. All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item number four, which I really appreciate it, and it's citizen comments. We'll be open at the floor, please state your name. You have three minutes to discuss whatever you want to bring up, and the floor is now open.
Hello, Council, uh, my name is Mac Oliver. I wanted to talk to y'all tonight.
I have a item that's on the agenda later on, on number eight, but that's not one of, what I wanted to throw out there to y'all tonight. Sorry about that. One of the things that we were thinking about was like the future of Oliver's martial arts, and one of my students' fathers came up with an ideal, and I wanted to throw that out there to y'all just to see what y'all thought about it. That building that I have my stuff stored in, that we're going to be talking about on item eight later, it's scheduled to be demolished. I really don't see anything wrong with that building. If it's going to be demolished anyway, why not just go ahead and donate that building to Oliver's martial arts and let us tear it down? I have people that have the equipment to do that, that have already offered to help. Allen Ivy, I think most of y'all know him, I think he tore down some of the buildings at one time. He's offered to help. And the second part of that is if there's a piece of property around town somewhere that nobody's using that the city owns, let me rebuild the building there. I can have my people come up with the money, we'll, we'll do fundraisers and whatever we have to do to raise the money for concrete slab or whatever. We're at, we actually have a fundraiser that's coming Saturday at two o'clock out here at the Cemetery Road out there, I think it used to be a Lulac or something like that, that building. But now it's a church, it's an overcomers church, yes. We're having a fundraiser out there this Saturday to raise money for the gym, so that is actually a first step going, it can go toward that or whatever. But that's just a proposal I wanted to throw out there and see what y'all thought about it. I don't expect y'all to vote on that and say, okay, it's yours tonight or nothing, but I just wanted to throw that out there and see what y'all thought about that. We can make use out of something that we're fixing to throw away, people, and I think that's a good idea. All right? Yes, Mac, real quick on that. Don't that think it's a liability issue, but something we could work out, right? Depending on what discussions come of it, which I know you've got people more than qualified to do it.
The issue, I've talked to the city attorney about it, the issue is we can't just give a building.
Right.
We have to put it out for bid, and obviously it would go to the highest bidder, Max bid was five hundred dollars, but yet somebody else bid a thousand dollars, we didn't acquire it to go with the highest bidder because it's a protection of an asset. We could relocate the building to the site that the city owns, and I've got my partner giving us a list of properties that the city owns that we could potentially put a building on. We, as a collective government, would have to pay whatever back taxes are from the school and the other entities, because it's not just the city that owns the building on the front. What concerns me the most is bringing that building up to code. That's going to be the most expensive part, and if you guys are going to do the fundraisers to do that, there is quite a bit of material that's been sprayed inside that building that makes it quite a fire hazard. It was basically spray insulation that you can go down and get at Lowe's, Home Depot, when that building was removed.
That's, I can say something about that. That spray and insulation that they got on there, they, they sprayed over holes, those are going to go away. You know, some of that tin I would have to replace, for sure, and that would definitely be some of the stuff I would have to replace, so that foam would not be an issue because it would go away in the garbage anyway, so.
That's pretty much the, the only concern in terms of giving the building away, probably not a realistic possibility, but in terms of relocating the building to a property that the city owns, a very real possibility, so the only issue would be bringing that building up to code.
I just want to turn, so you understood if there's any barriers to brought out in the open now, that way, whatever plan is made or whatever, I want you to be right there with us, and I want nothing to come out of that feeling, blindsided. Oh, that, I understand that, I mean, I totally understand that. I mean, my only question that that would be, how would you go about doing it now if you're fixing to tear it down anyway? I mean, if it's in tear it down and sell it for scrap metal, right?
Yep, we basically have to go to stay on the demolition, which is, we have a building on the demolition list right now, if somebody has expressed interest in that building, we can't just give the building, we had to put it out for bid, and so whoever's the bidder, you know, the winning bidder gets the building, he gets to move it off-site. Same thing, the only issue is once, you know, word gets around town that there's a building that could potentially go for a dollar, you're going to have people bid a dollar, two dollars, three dollars, four dollars. You know, that, that's the You know, that, that's the issue, and so, yes, you're right, it is slated to be demolished, but it has some value to it, whether that's a scrap or whether that's whatever, so the easiest way is just keep it under the city's, move it onto a city-owned piece of property and rehab it, and then let them sublease it to you as a.
Put it back together, put it back towards.
Whichever way, whichever way works for you.
However it works, I mean, we need a place to train. You know, I just, I just had three guys compete in a tournament this past weekend, and we were getting these guys ready in the garages and everywhere else, so, I mean, and they all, we got two golds and a silver, so they all did what they needed to do, so.
We do have, we already have my marketer working on, on the city-owned property, because they approached me with this last week, and like I said, my, my only concern would be understanding if the building has to come up to code, where that expense would come from, and I don't know how many bathrooms I've put in in that building in a while, so, yeah, we're going to run into some issues, they're not insurmountable issues, you just need to give them.
Which I think Mac could handle, right?
I, I would, I would strongly suggest that you make an appointment with Michael, and you guys do a walkthrough of the building, so he can kind of point out, and you, you might make a denomination at that point that is maybe not, you know, not likely to be able to be converted, or is, so I, I really strongly suggest you take a walk with Michael through the building and find out what exactly you're going to need to do to that building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a citizen comment this evening? Is everybody sure they don't want me to comment? Anyway, I do appreciate it, thank you, Mac, I do appreciate everybody that is here today. That, that's going to close our citizen comments, it's going to bring us up to item number five, considering that on entering into TCPN contract number R5127, fuel cards and related services with the Texas Fleet Fuel to provide an off-site fuel card services to the city of Ransus Pass.
Mayor and council, we do have a representative here from Fleet Fuel, if you guys have any questions. The, the issue is the city of Ransus Pass, we, we have our own underground fuel storage that gets filled with excess of petroleum, or we have a petroleum contract to avoid at that point. We do pay rack price, and then there's also a markup, so oftentimes, we're paying what our local residents are paying down at the pump. I don't have any way to track, there's no usage, there's no gallons usage, it's basically the honor system, and so obviously, I don't want to have to maintain what could potentially be an environmental hazard, not to mention, all of the loss that we're probably experiencing that's not been tracked. So Fleet Fuel is a, a service, it's basically like a fuel main card, and I'm able to track at.
Any one of our local stations who participates, not necessarily just Valero or Stripes, our people can fill up anywhere, it's tracked to the vent, it's tracked, I have a performance report of how many miles were driven, how much gas was used, and so I, I think we're going to substantially cut down on not only loss, but also have a way to actually have how many hours or man-hours are on a vehicle or a piece of equipment.
Thanks, sir.
It gives us in-house control too, to deactivate or activate a card, and if we have staff, for example, making the runs to San Antonio for the asphalt, if they have a flat tire or something like that, the card lets them activate a certain amount to get tires repaired and those kinds of things, and so it's, it's a very, very good tool that helps us in a variety of ways, and it, it doesn't cost us much, in fact, it's going to end up saving us money. They do get a cut off of, obviously off of the price of, of the gasoline that we fill with, but to tell you right now that at any one of our stations or at any one of our uses, they're giving us all the exemptions that were due, I'd be lying to you, because I have no way of knowing that. And the city spends, you know, more than $100,000 on fuel a year.
This would be more accountability.
Yes, absolutely. So currently, right now, they just go fill up?
Yes, there's an honor system, they, they log in, they track, they write how many miles, but there's, I have no way of knowing if, you know, Vicky went at 8:00 AM and Vicky went at 8:00 PM, and if she filled her city car and if she filled her personal car, I have no way of knowing that right now.
So how is this card going to track what vehicle is being used?
That's a good question. Yeah, and that's a really good question. Basically, the way our program works, it's a little bit different what you're do, what you're doing now, we're all about accountability and control, so what's going to happen is, each individual vehicle is going to have a card, each individual employee is going to have a PIN. So if they're, if Johnny's in the 2015 Ford Explorer, he goes down to, and you have nine locations locally, that our cards accept it at, so basically, he goes down to the Valero, he swipes the card, it's going to ask for PIN number, he types in his unique PIN, it's going to ask for odometer. Now odometer's key, because odometer helps us keep track of miles per gallon, there's no way to manipulate our system, so basically, the first time he fills, he puts 60,00358, so the next time he fills, it's going to take that odometer reading, and it's going to base your miles per gallon. Now with our program, if they put the incorrect fuel, you're going to get an email saying they put the incorrect fuel. If they put the incorrect odometer, you're going to get an email saying they put the incorrect odometer. Incorrect PIN, the same thing, and so forth. So basically, we help you keep track of every dollar spent and every gallon used, so on a weekly basis, you're going to get a report, and, which, you know, a lot of times, most people are doing monthly reports, but not only that, we're the only company that offers real-time reporting. So basically, when they hang up the pump, you're able to go into the system, because you'll have online access, you'll be able to go in, you'll see what Johnny did. Okay, well, why did Johnny put 52 gallons when he just filled yesterday? You know what I mean? So you'll be able to see, he's getting six miles a gallon, and you'll know if any funny business and things are going on. And while, you know, there might not be theft, you know, I mean, all of us are realists, we're not thieves, we don't think like thieves, but you realize, some people get in desperate situations and they make, you know, bad decisions. So with our program, you're able to eliminate theft. Not only that, she talked about our pricing, basically, our pricing works like this, our owner, Alan Smith, is part of Smith Petroleum, so what y'all are doing now, y'all buying bulk fuel, but unfortunately, because you're not buying, you know, huge amounts, 10,000 gallons every, you know, week or so, you're not taking advantage of the full benefits of rack price. Well, with us, you pay a rack, you pay rack price plus a 12-cent markup, but also, and we discussed this as well, we exempt you at the pump, so we exempt you federally at the pump. I'm not, I'm not sure if they're doing that now, but one thing about our program, you will be getting exempt at the pump, so.
Okay, when you say that they use an incorrect PIN or a odometer reading, are we going to program all the odometer readings as it is right now when we go to this program?
Yeah, basically, the way it works, so let's say you get the cards this week, right? So somebody's got the 2015 Explorer, the first time they put the odometer, that's going to be the first odometer, so anything from there on, it's going to keep track of miles per gallon. So if they put 60,358, and then the guy goes and fills two days later and puts 59,222, it's going to kick it back, you know, it's going to kick it back and say, there's no way. So automatically, it's going to bring up a red flag, and within 30 minutes, you're going to get an email saying, red flag, something's going on at the pump, or, you know, he got busy and he just typed in something real quick, so you're going to be able to approach that individual saying, Johnny, what happened at the pump, you know, we, did you just get busy, or, you know, what's, what's going on? So you'll be able to keep track of each individual transaction, and unfortunately, what you're doing now, it is an honor system, you kind of trust that every transaction, when they go and they fill, is honest and legit, and, and even times, because we, we deal with the city of Robstown, they're one of our customers, and one of their biggest issues was that they've got a railroad track, so they're fighting, you know, if they get a call, they need to make sure, pump quick, and get over that railroad track before a train comes, and many times, they don't even write it down, or they write down the misinformation. The thing with our program, there's no misinformation. Another, another benefit to our program too, is you'll get not only, you know, not only where you get online access, you'll get real-time recording, within five minutes, you can get a new PIN, you can kill a PIN instantly if you let somebody go, you can add a PIN instantly, new cards, within 24 to 48 hours, you'll have new cards in hand, if a card is lost, stolen, and then we also break down, in a monthly basis, we break down each individual vehicle, the miles driven for the month, the gallon used for that vehicle, so if you have to depreciate a certain vehicle, there's no guesswork, well, we put 22,000 miles on it last year, you'll know how many miles you put on it, so, you know, it kind of helps.
What about a PIN number? You said that they put the incorrect PIN, are, are they still going to be able to use the card?
No, 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 and, and that's a great question, and the reason we designate cards to a vehicle is because of that alone. So let's say Johnny goes and he's filling the truck, and, you know, he puts the card back in the vehicle, he doesn't like the vehicle, he goes to Stripes, he goes, gets a hot dog, let's say some lady or man walks up, steals the card, thinking that they can use it, they go to try to use it, now without a PIN, they're not going to be able to utilize that card, so, you know, the only person that's going to be able to utilize the cards is people with identification numbers, so.
What about for the off-road diesel? Are we still going to hold a tank for the heavy equipment, or are we just going to use regular diesel?
No, it's, it's also possible to track through this, they'd have to enter hours utilized, that's probably one of the weaker points of the system, because somebody, that's a little bit difficult to track, because those tanks vary, and then the man-hours used and all that stuff, yeah, but, you know, in terms of, I think our tank at the yard might be for backup only, in terms of storm events or something like that, but, yeah.
So we're going to take like these brushhogs and pieces of equipment down to Valero and fill them up, and? That, well, a lot of those don't, like the bigger piece of equipment, they don't actually have odometers, it's all hours.
Hours, yeah.
Correct, and, and it's been my experience, people that are on the program, the cities that we deal with, they're going by hours, because we actually will give you a card, each individual card will be assigned, it'll say 2014 F-150, or, like you said, you know, brush hog, that, you, you can really designate the vehicles to kind of say what you want, you can customize the program to kind of fit, you know, the way you want it, our, we do off-road cards as well, so you're going to type it, you're going to type in the, the hours, so it's going to be a little bit different, you know, unfortunately, the security on that is not as great, but it's probably a little bit better than, you know, now, but yeah, like you said, I mean, if, if you load one of those up on a trailer or something, I mean, it's pretty easy, but if you're driving one of those down to the Valero, I mean, makes it a little bit more difficult, so, that's a great question.
Another question, this card right there is just, can only be activated with a PIN, you can't go in there like, for instance, now in a debit card, you can sign as a credit, and just get a signature without having to enter a PIN number, because if you find a card and you feel like it's a PIN, you know, I can go into the store and have them just enter it as a credit, and I don't have to enter a PIN number.
Yeah, and that, and that's a great question, our cards can't be manipulated, they're only going to work with a PIN, when you go in the station, the clerk cannot, you know, manipulate, put, you know, beer or drinks or anything, there's no codes that can be entered, so basically, on our program, you can only put fuel, and.
There's no, there's no, no number of the card that they can enter into their cash register?
There's a number on the card, but no, it's, it's basically just.
You can tell I work for a bank, I just want to make sure, I know all the ways around it, okay?
Yeah, it's a number on a card, and basically, our cards, most of them expire like in 37 or 47, so, yeah, it's, it's a little bit different. Now, they can manually enter a card, they can manually enter the card, but unfortunately, you know, for the thieves, they can only purchase fuel, you know what I mean?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, you know, saying, this part right there, they can manually enter it, so there's a way around it, right?
Oh, yeah, they're going to still, yeah, yeah, when, when the clerk manually enters it, they're still going to need their PIN in order to make the purchase of fuel, correct.
Just want to hear that, hear it out, okay.
That's a great question, that's really a great question.
I guess the only concern I have is, because I worked at Sherwin over there, and they had our badges that would allow us to get fuel, either diesel or gas, for either Kubota or truck, or, or a piece, big piece of equipment, and one of the issues that had happened was that nobody knew the man-hours on the equipment, or, let's say I'm driving a diesel, but they gave me a gas truck, and I was like, well, shoot, I need truck 214, I know that's a gas truck, I would enter that, then just throw whatever mileage I wanted, and it would automatically turn on and go, and let me fuel up there.
Yeah, and, and the thing about it is, it's not going to stop you from fueling if you put the wrong odometer.
Right.
It, it's only going to stop you from fueling if you put the wrong PIN. It's not, it's not going to let you, it'll still let you fuel, but basically, the, you know.
You'll see the change between the diesel and gas.
Correct, I mean, our, our program is all about accountability and control, you know, to, I mean, basically, if a guy puts a wrong, you know, wrong odometer, he's not going to be cut off at the pump or anything like that. Another benefit of our program too, is there's no limits, because we've been told, you know, somebody will get to a station, and they're, they're cut off at $100, or they're cut off at $50, so forth, and then they've got to hang it up.
Start over.
And start over. With, with our program, there's no limits, so.
So I guess on our part, we have to make sure odometers are working, because I do know for a fact, because one of our gentlemen, they've been actually using their own personal trucks to drive to the dump, because we're so short on vehicles, and then I asked them to go reimbursing you with fuel, or, and of course, he said no, and I was like, well, something we need to discuss later, but, yeah, it's a need for accountability.
And, and you can also get, because we have several cities that'll get contract cards, like for contractors, and they'll, they'll hand out the card, so they don't have to reimburse, you know what I mean? It's kind of, it's somewhat of a benefit if you want to kind of keep track of every dollar, instead of, you know, kind of a roundabout number.
What's your name again, sir?
My name is Aaron, let me give you one of my business cards.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Is there any other questions for the council? Vicky? Everybody looking at Vicky on this one.
Vicky has asked some great questions, because I mean, at, at the end of the day, I mean, you know, what, you want to make sure that what's going on, I mean, every dollar counts, I mean, not only for y'all, but, you know, the taxpayers as well, so.
That's what we answer to, so, yes. All right, thank you, sir.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
Well, I make a motion that we enter into a contract with TCPN, I need to put that R5127, what does that?
How long is this contract, sir?
It's on demand, it's not a.
Yeah, and that's, I guess I should address that, yeah, basically, the way our program works is, it's an agreement, there's no contracts, fortunately, in, in the TCPN agreement, you're able to get out, let's say you get on the program for a couple months, or whatever, you decide, you know what, this isn't for us, we're going to go back to what we're doing, you know, you can get out, you're not bonded in any way to the agreement, so.
I just should have asked sooner, if they want to be like a cell phone.
And, and, and I should have answered it earlier, but yeah, we, we do business with over 70 cities in the state of Texas, we have 164 government entities that we do business with, and I've only been in this area for about five months. We, we're an Austin-based company, I'm out of Corpus, I'm your local rep, so if you ever have any questions, you call me, I don't, I don't disappear after this is over, this is.
I know where you live here. I know where you live.
Yeah, we had a motion in a second.
Hi, second.
All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Well, card by the end of the week, you said. He did, he said that, well, card by the end of the week.
This will bring us to item number six, considering that the nomination by resolution to fill Frank Hamner's position on the San Patricia County Appraisal District in a special election.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, our local rep, Frank Hamner, has submitted his resignation effective December 1st. I did send you guys the email over the weekend from Commissioner Price and Commissioners Court recommending Mr. Dan Moore for the position. Today, I had a, an application from Mr. Victor Galván, who also wants to be considered for the position, and so we have to act by resolution, the resolutions are due December the 4th, to the Appraisal District Board.
So right now, we're making a nomination, or for it?
You're making a nomination, yes.
Right now, we have two, which is Mr. Moore and Mr. Galván, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And so, one of you asked the question over the weekend on, had we advertised, it's not our, yeah, it's not our position to advertise, it's advertised on the appraisal district's website, and so it's, you know, their position, it's, it's our votes, but it's their position, so no, we had not, we had not advertised. Matter of fact, I think we just got notice at some point last week, so, the letter's dated, well, you have the letter in front of me, the letter's dated October 20th, which means we got it sometime midweek, so.
Okay, so we have one, we just make a recommendation from the city, and it's up to the?
It is to the appraisal district, and I, and I guess I'm a little bit confused, and maybe Dan can, can fill in, as of today, there were no applicants yet at the appraisal district board, neither Mr. Galván. Neither Mr. Galván or Mr. Moore's application was active. But I think they gave out misleading information because they told us they didn't need to apply. And then later on, they said, yes, they do need to apply. So, I don't know if making a nomination today is appropriate because neither one of them has an active application. Have you submitted yours, Dan? As of, as of today, you didn't have an active application, right, at the appraisal district? Yeah, and so, I'm not sure if it's even appropriate.
I don't think we should do anything unless there's applications in.
Well, and that was my comment to Commissioner Price today about, I don't know, I don't know how appropriate the vote is if we don't have, we don't have an application. And the appraisal district has given out two conflicting pieces of information.
Yeah, we need to get the correct story from them.
Yeah.
I'm not comfortable voting on anything like that.
Yeah, and that was at about 4:45 this afternoon, so. We do have until December 4th, so you have one more council meeting before we have to take action.
I make a motion, we just pass on this and consider it our next board meeting, I mean, city council meeting, board meeting.
Can you get more information on them specific to the wording and how they want to? So, Vicky was the...
Yes, I make a motion.
Sounds good. Then we'll choose from the applicants at that time.
So, Mayor, you requested us to share that link on our website.
Yes, please. Anything that's going to affect our citizens and our community, I believe it should be passed through.
Well, this can come from any city within the San Patricia. It's not necessarily going to come from Aransas Pass, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
We're just a part of it, I believe, right?
Yes, and, you know, obviously, it's good to have somebody in our jurisdiction represented on the board because these are the folks that hear when you have, you throw the flag on how much your value has increased, yeah.
Did we have a second?
Second.
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Could we both?
Could we both?
No.
No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Mayor.
Next meeting, that's cool. Let's bring us to item number seven. Consider an act and request of Frank S. Proch, forgive me for mispronouncing name, to forgive the lien interest on lots 12 and 13, block 231, on 100 blocks south, 10th Street.
The property has $2,098.80 of weed liens on it. The interest far exceeds the principal amount. For example, in 2008, the principal amount of the lien was $300. Today, with interest, that is $582.71 that's owed. So, we would have been owed in just principal $1,250, but now with the interest accrued, it's $2,098.80. So, what he's asking us to forgive is $848.05 of interest on the property. He's willing to pay the principal balance, just asking for forgiveness on the interest portion.
Is he going to build a house? Is that what?
Yes, he plans to develop the property.
What's the address?
That's a good question. Elon, do you have specific address information?
Whatever they can find.
100 block of South 10th.
Thank you, Vicky.
There's no house there, right?
Well, just kind of, picture in my head. You guys get a map? How come I can't get the audio?
We don't get a map. Half the time, we don't get a map. But, let me see. Maybe we can pull it up on... I'm sorry, Paul. No street, North 10th Street. It properly belongs to, you need to know. Let me get the, let me get the...
Block 231, 100 blocks south.
It's going to be the first block.
Aaron, can you kind of move that so we can... Block 238, section 16 of...
Can you get a bigger screen? Here we go.
Bill, can you look on my map in the office and see where block 238 is, or block 231, sorry?
Is 10th Street where the old Pizza Hut was?
Yes.
So, it'd be that lot right behind it then?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would be...
Because Wheeler's the other side of Wheeler.
The mark, yeah.
Yeah, Wheeler's dividing line there.
Is there anything there?
Where Auburn is?
It's right across from the, close to the Shell shop, somewhere in that area. Up on the other side of the street, down there. Between 10th and the left.
To not where the DA stuff is.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Where?
This?
Oh, north side.
This is South 10th.
It says South 10th.
It says South 10th.
So, it's right behind, see where the green top is, it'd be to the left.
On the other side.
Power grocery store.
It'd be your right.
Yes, nope.
Here?
Yeah, it would have to be that one.
Well, if you'll give me a minute, I'll pull up the appraisal district map specifically for that.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's good. So, do I hear a motion to forgive the $848 of the lien, lots 12 and 13, block 231, 100 blocks south, 10th Street?
I make a motion that we forgive the interest amount of $848.05 for lots 12, 13, block 231.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Let's bring us to item number eight. Consider an act on allowing Mac Oliver to use 405 Bigelow to teach classes until the building is demolished.
I think this item is self-explanatory.
So, I make a motion, we allow Mac Oliver to use the building at 405 Bigelow to teach classes until the building is demolished.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's bring us to item number nine. Consider an act on entering into a contract with JJ Divers for the amount not to exceed $20,000.
Mayor and council, we previously entered into a contract with JJ Divers for an amount less than $50,000 for the entire inner harbor peninsula and through the outer harbor in terms of inspecting the bulkhead as part of our bond project toward demolition and et cetera, et cetera. We were hoping the inspection would have been complete prior to all of the demolition, but the demolition's taken a while, so this, the additional amount takes care of...
It takes care of that lot.
And Chuck West is here, if you guys have any questions for him on the current harbor inspection, which we've received the results of. The initial inspection took into account all of this portion. This additional inspection takes all of this section into account.
So, he's already made his way all around?
He's here if you want to talk to him.
Would that be Chuck West?
Chuck West. I haven't opened the report yet, Philip, so...
So, what has been, what have you uncovered?
Lots of debris, that I know.
Not Jimmy Hoffa yet.
That was going to be my question, if you find him.
The additional contract is on Huff Street from basically Wilson Avenue where the big boat is moored, down to the angle where the bulkhead itself breaks off of Huff Street to go behind the dry stack. That portion was not included in Phase 1, 2, 3, but we are seeing faults from the water side. And we've suggested and the city manager has agreed that we ought to go ahead and inspect that portion too, so you know where you're at with it. We have completed Phase 1, 2, and 3, which is from the angle on Huff Street all the way around the peninsula, back up to the portion that's currently leased by Edi Gilner at the Aransas Ways. And we have turned in the report, the narrative and the data, and some representative pictures to Sylvia earlier today with an invoice. There are many problem areas. There are not as many as I was afraid we might find, but there's quite a bit of work to be done.
I wanted to eat dinner in peace. I haven't looked at the pictures yet.
They're representative, and the underwater ones are very difficult to make out, but they're showing some of the commentary that we have in the data as separations, cracks, wall shifting, wall kickouts at the bottom, stuff like that. A lot of that is minor, and I'm sure that you're not going to tackle any of that until those minor issues become major. We've put a time forecast on those, but basically where you've got concrete panels that are, for lack of a better term, tongue-in-groove that are slipped in to the mud, and they don't fit, they don't stack just like dominoes, so there is separation in all of them. And where we're able to get our whole hand in the separation and not find the back of that tongue-in-groove, we've noted that because that's a potential failure 10 years from now or so. But we're ready to go back to work. The water's not cold yet, so. Any questions, Mr. Mayor, ladies gentlemen?
Well, the item that Chuck's looking at, I mean, it's of importance, it's of particular importance because that's a recently repaired area of bulkhead that's already failing.
That's already failing?
That's already failing. And it's on a lease section. It's this area here that's already failing.
Like Billy said, who did the work on that?
I would suggest, and as far as making recommendations for repairs, I will leave that to the engineer. We're not engineers, we're divers. But I would highly suggest at some point in time that the engineer, whoever you may use at that point, be instructed as to compressive strength of the cement. If concrete overpasses were built out of the same grade of cement, there'd be a lot of accidents on the highways.
And his commentary says that.
Good deal. Appreciate that, Mr. West.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we enter into a contract with J&amp;J Divers for an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Second the motion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's bring us to item number 10. Consider an act on the police department items. A is approving a memorandum of understanding between the police department and Coastal Bend Regional Amber Alert Program, Region 5 Child Abduction Response Team. Item B was approving the purchase of the Pet Point hosted SASS for Animal Services Division. Eric?
Council, thank you. The memorandum that we're talking about is we're participating with CCPD and surrounding agencies in about, I think it was a 12-county area. And CART stands for Child Abduction Response Team. CCPD learned from the child abduction, they had last year that small girl that was abducted, raped, and then left on the side of a beach, the need that was needed. Now, if we join this, resign the MOU and join formally, that provides us with all the resources available to all those other agencies. Basically, we'll have an officer that will be part of that team, our captain, our CID captain. And if CART gets activated in Corpus and our CID captain is needed for whatever his specialty or resource is, he will respond over to CCPD and he'll assist on that investigation. Likewise, those CART members from those other agencies come to our community. And I think we really need this. It's a no-brainer. Would have been nice to have had it many years ago when we had a child abduction. The Pet Point, Pet Point is a software specifically tailored to deal with our animals for animal services as far as when the animals are, if they're impounded, if the animals are going to be put up for adoption, medications. It keeps an inventory of those medications that we can access and we can go and then...
Forecast of five, external.
And we can do our audits on that. What I really like about it is the impoundment and the abductions.
Adoptions. Adoptions and dogs and sex and children.
Adoptions, they'll, they call it iFrame, which is a code term, but they iFrame over to our website. So, somebody can go to our website, they can see, you know, if we pick their dog up or whatever. Or they can also see what animals are up for adoption at that given time.
That's good.
And start the process directly from the website. The software basically costs $500, which is a deposit to get it going. You get that $500 back basically at the end of the program, you get your deposit back. Now, where they make money from is they provide services to our people to do the adoptions. For example, when we start chipping animals, we put chips in them, we have to buy the chips from them. They're about $6 to $8, depending on what type of chip that you get for a chip, which is very, in my opinion, very expensive to be able to locate the owner of an animal. The other thing is when we give out an adoption, and I think we've experienced this where an animal was given out, an animal ended up dying or was sickly, they actually have insurance that they give out for free on that adoption for the first 90 days, I believe, 30 to 90 days. And then if the owner of the animal wants to buy extended insurance on the animal, they can do so. So, that's where the company collects their money, is through the chipping and the insurance on the animals. I think it's an awesome solution. I think we should run with it. It would be very helpful beneficial.
I like that we're able to program, there's four or five websites, pet finder websites, so to speak, that once we enter information to Pet Point, it automatically populates those other... So, you could be in Rhode Island or New York or California and see information about the animals we take in almost immediately, so it will increase the number of adoptions.
That would help with people on vacation or animal needs, please.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Do I hear a motion for approval for item A and B?
I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the Coastal Bend Regional Amber Alert Program, Region 5, and also B, approving the purchase of Pet Point hosted SASS for Animal Service Division.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it, sir. Let's bring us to item number 11. City manager updates. Sylvia, it's all yours.
Well, Mayor and council, the work at Combron Harbor continues, the demolition continues. We have had a lot of comments stirring of the pot about the cement and the asbestos down at the harbor. I just wanted to let council know the asbestos tests are clear. We have involved TCQ. Demolition is going to continue. Part of that, what I guess I'm calling riffraff later on, we're keeping the smaller portions for street-based. The larger portion, the contractor's going with, and also with rebar. So, there is an opportunity that that contractor's going to sell that further on to other municipalities or to other businesses, and so I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that. That was part of the contract. The Thanksgiving feast, we've had an overwhelming amount of support and offers for volunteers. Things are going, things are going absolutely very well with that. HUB is going to be an HUB in conjunction with the AP Drill Team, I believe, is going to be manning the children's area. Alpha Covington, who's a local author, is going to provide us some books and is going to read and autograph the books. Rotary, I mean, the amount of response from the churches and the organizations has been absolutely tremendous. We planned for 400 meals. I think we may far exceed that. So, this is the first one. We'll see how it goes. We're going to have some...
What's the date again, Sylvia?
November 19th. From 6 to 8. I still need people from, you know, probably 5 o'clock. City staff is going to be working on the 18th, setting everything up, getting everything situated. Obviously, there's cleanup after the feast as well, so, you know, it'll go an extended amount of time. Veterans Memorial Park, interestingly enough, the park is going up much faster than even I had planned for it to go.
Looks fantastic.
Well, it does, but, but we're not... The actual monument itself doesn't arrive until January, so I did not expect our contractors to be done. Well, it does, but, but we're not, the, the actual monument itself doesn't arrive until January, so I did not expect our contractors to be done. And we have had some change orders on the concrete, there was no way to salvage some of what we thought was salvageable in the walkway, so we've had to re-force some concrete. So you will see a change order for Veterans Memorial. And we are still waiting on what the graphic is gonna look like that's painted on the fence, the mural. We did have one small act of vandalism already at the park. We are monitoring the park, there are cameras around the park, just so our local thieves are aware, and I'll show you some pictures of what we're taking. I don't know that Eric wants me to share, but I figure if folks understand that we're taking pictures immediately.
That's good.
Eric, we putting, I know we got the fence in the back, were you putting like chain link on the sides at all?
There's going to be bollards with, with the nautical rope, we even put that up, because there's still some concrete to go. We still, all of these areas that have the, the black around them still needs to be backfilled, so there'll be a transition.
The one by the miracle round's gonna be raised up?
The miracle round was moved recently, if you haven't been there, it was moved, it was moved from the corner closer into the park, because a light post, light post says to go there. The other thing is, I've had a lot of people ask about handicap accessibility, the park is handicap accessible, the handicap ramps are listed on the playgrounds. We do have a section of Community Park that is specific to a handicap child, they'll be able to roll up a wheelchair and sort of swing, so there will be a specific component, a larger component at Community Park. This one is accessible as required by ADA, it just doesn't have the functionality that the one at the bigger park is going to have.
Well, they're doing a good job.
Well, they're moving a lot faster than I thought they were going to move, and, you know, we've just gotta be prepared. Um, Community Park, if you haven't been to Community Park, it's blowing and going as well, the demolition took a little less time than we thought, all of the pea gravel was moved out, and if you haven't been to the front of City Hall, we've reclaimed a lot of that pea gravel, and redone all of the flower beds, and we'll be doing some other areas of the city as well. Most of that pea gravel's gonna be reclaimed for our fire hydrants, it serves as good base for the hydrants, and so, it's a good repurpose of material. But, the Community Park, all of the swing sets will be up by first part of December. So, what will be left at Community Park is you guys will vote on the rest of the improvements, and then the schedule of events for those improvements to happen. And I'm hoping Community Park is completed by the April timeframe, so. Expect a groundbreaking ribbon-cutting ceremony at Veterans Memorial in the first couple of weeks of January. We've still got some electrical to run there and some lighting, but that one's pretty much done, and Community Park, well, that's got a lot of work to be done still.
To let you know too, that truck retreat, we were the only ones there, but, good to say, we had about 460 kids show up, and there were, and the parents were asking, you know, if we're gonna do it again next year, you know, what can the city do to... They liked the idea, so, hopefully, the word will get out, make sure...
It was well-lit.
Yeah.
It really was.
The, your, I saw the pictures of your truck, the back of your truck, it was well-lit?
Yeah, it was cracing the coals, you wouldn't, can't do anything without them.
I think this year, and you know, I will take full responsibility, I think this year, we just ran short of getting the word out.
But there's a football game going on too, also.
I did have a lot of people ask about our, our haunted house this year, it just, with all of the work going down on the harbor in terms of all the debris, and then the storage at the, at the Cohen Building, it just wasn't feasible to have a haunted house. We're gonna look for an alternate site next year, I mean, I, trust me, I heard about the city didn't have a haunted house this year.
I had a gentleman, actually, came up to me, I told you earlier, that, you know, he was asking me questions, and then he donated a couple bags of candy to you, I go, you wanna head on out yourself? He goes, no, just let you and you out, keep doing it, and that, you know, it was real positive.
I'm sorry, I missed one thing, the Christmas lighting, if you, we're being slowly overtaken by Christmas decorations. The text-out utility permit is in process, have been back and forth of text-out, we've already managed to wrangle through the AEP process as well, we're gonna be re, we're gonna be installing some permanent outlets, basically, at the base of each of the light poles that we'll be able to use year after year. But, the only thing that, that may set us back is the, the arrival of the actual posts in the downtown, because we are replacing all the lighting fixtures in the downtown area, and those aren't slated to arrive till the end of November, so, we're gonna be pushing really hard to get those installed and the decorations up.
Okay, I'll take care of that, if there's any other questions? Then this will bring us to item 12, we're gonna recess, open meeting, retire to executive session, and pursue in a chapter 551 Texas Government Code for item A, deliberations regarding real estate property of Combran Harbor development, and item B, consultation with our city attorney in legal matters of Nate Smith Engineering. I don't really, they did that other work in the harbor, we talked about earlier, but that's another thing. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and ask everybody to please step outside right now, we're gonna hold the executive session in here, and I thank y'all that came out this evening, thank you very much.